All right, I'm good. Okay, one sec, let me insert my mic. Now they should be able to hear you say hi.
Oh, we've been muted. Hi Lucy, hi Jessica.
Hello.
And it looks like we have a forum and so we can go ahead and get started. There's a lot on our both of our agendas tonight. Well, so welcome, first of all, welcome to, this is the work meeting for the Cotton Heights Planning Commission for this Wednesday, January nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. And we'll go ahead and run through our work meeting agenda quickly, work through a couple of items. I'm going to wait to hand it over. I'll let you know, Mike, when we're ready. Our work meeting agenda, we have an election of the Chair and Vice Chair of Cotton Heights Planning Commission is, if you look through our packet, this was something that has been waiting and so we're ready to go ahead and change those seats, which happens once a year. And then we'll review our business meeting agenda. And if we have any other discussion items amongst the commissioners, we'll have time for that hopefully. And we will have a presentation by city staff on a evaluation and development standards, what you often hear referred to as sleds ordinance. So that's our work meeting and we'll start with the election of the Chair and Vice Chair for the Cotton Heights Planning Commission.
Ready for nomination?
If you aren't ready, I have one too. For a nomination first, right? Oh, okay, you want to put a motion on the table?
I do. My motion is that we appoint my acclamation or Chair and Vice Chair. And then we appoint Jesse Allen as the Chair and Commissioner Mills as the Vice Chair.
Mills.
This saves us all the time with speeches.
I will second that motion. Any discussion?
Just putting in information, I didn't hear who was Vice Chair. Christian Mills, okay.
We have a motion and a second.
No discussion.
Yeah, let's go ahead and take a vote. We'll start with on screen. Commissioner Chapel, just let me know she's here. She's just having issues with her screen, so she's not going to turn it on. So let's start with you, Commissioner Chapel. Did you hear the motion in the second?
I just want to repeat Commissioner Allen as Chair and Commissioner Mills as Vice Chair.
Correct.
I'm sorry, and we're voting, right?
Yes, we are.
Okay, I vote yes.
Okay, Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Let's go this way. Commissioner Edley?
Aye.
Commissioner Mills?
Yes.
Christian Kuth votes yes.
Mr. Wild votes yes.
Commissioner Wild votes yes.
Mr. Allen votes yes.
Yes, and what, so congratulations.
Whatever you guys.
relieved that you're asked.
These roles. The other, the other thing that we need to discuss around that one is if you saw in our packet, and they had changed when we changed these seats. But that is, and I've now been in the seat for over a year. So what I would like to put on the table is that you, that it becomes effective with our February two thousand and twenty-two meeting.
So would it then, with the year and after the February meeting?
Well, that's a good question.
Until July?
No, I think it's a partial year. I think, I think that.
Well, you'd still serve for a year. Let's, Shane, can, are you understanding what we're talking about here?
I am. I believe that the, the rules and procedures provide that the officers will go into effect in July, the meeting in July.
Right, and that we, we had the option to, because I've now served for over a year in this role, to, I could relinquish that seat to the newly elected.
We could vote to suspend the rules.
And we could vote to suspend the rules as well, yeah.
That's probably the cleanest way to do it, because other, otherwise you, you probably have to resign the seat than the.
It's the chairmanship.
Yeah.
Yeah, that I'd like to hand over.
Right now, the rules as they exist, it goes, we vote now, goes into effect July one.
Right.
You continue to serve.
Last year.
I think it was changed.
Why?
Yeah, well, I think the nomination stayed in February, and I think that probably should have been changed to June. But it wasn't, but July is always the start of any new planning commission term.
Right.
Terms always end June, so the, the logic was start them in July. Everyone's on a new term and.
But only one was changed and not the other.
But in the bylaws, yeah, the, the start date was changed, but the election date wasn't.
Well, let, let's.
I moved to suspend the rules.
To suspend the rules because of that, that idiosyncrasy.
I think it's a two-year.
Get the rule in line and then go ahead and make the change now, is what we would like to do.
So I moved to suspend the rules to make the, the, the one-year term starting February, or the first meeting in February, or February one?
Our next meeting, which would be, which would be first Wednesday in February, two thousand and twenty-two.
So.
So we have a motion and a second. Shane, any, any heartburn over that?
Well, what I'm, what I'm hearing is you, you want to be released as of the February meeting.
From the chairmanship.
As, as the chairman.
Correct.
Well. Yeah, I mean, if, if that's what is desired by, I think that the only option is to go ahead. The, the issue is that these, it's not just a question of suspending the rules, because the rules are, are approved by the City Council, so I think we would probably just need to make the City Council aware of, of the change that is happening early and see if they have any partner.
Okay, and if there's any issues, you'll let us know prior to our next meeting, and then we can correct.
Sure.
We can correct that.
Do that.
Thank you, thanks for being willing, both of you. And now, and then a review of our business meeting agenda is our next item of business. And we have on our business meeting agenda several items. First one is Project SUB dash twenty-one dash zero zero seven. This is a public hearing to receive comments and take possible action on a request from Ivory Homes for preliminary subdivision plots and conditional use approval, so two items they're looking for approval for of a planned unit development on a property located at thirty-six twenty-five East Dover Hills Drive in the residential single-family zone. This is, as most of you know, continued from our December first, two thousand and twenty-one meeting, and we had it on our agenda, January fifth, although Ivory did not have, so we left the public comment period open at that time. The next item on our business meeting agenda is Project LOT dash two-one dash zero zero one. This is a public hearing to receive comments and take possible action on a request from Robert Smith to amend lots seven and eight of the Caballero Ranches amended subdivision. By consolidating two lots into one, the subject properties are located at seventeen eighty East Siesta Drive in the rural residential zone. And that one. Yeah, public hearing and possible action, and the, the last item on our business meeting agenda is Project ZTA dash two-two dash zero zero one. This is a public hearing to receive comments and make possible recommendations to the City Council on a proposed ordinance updating, update, excuse me, relating to water conservation standards. This city-initiated ordinance is being proposed in response to requirements at the water provider level, so those are three items on our business meeting agenda, and then I'm going to ask before we turn it over to city staff, especially on the item that we've already heard, the Ivory Homes development, we had, we had a lot, a lot of city staff input and, and that's already been put out there, so in the interest of time, so that we can get to all the things on our agendas that we be aware, we're, we're already of those things, so you can, you can move to this quickly. And with that, we'll turn it over to city staff to run through those items on our business meeting agenda.
Thank you. I am going to focus on the, the updates that were submitted by Ivory. I've got the whole background I can go over if there are questions, but I will not spend time doing that unless it's requested of how this subdivision came to be and portion of it was offered for sale to the city and that whole context. So the background is, as the commission is aware, this was tabled on December first, and this is all in your packet as well, that's on the website, but there were handful of, of topics or items that more information was requested on. So this presentation will go through that. And I do have a few slides that go over the, the design guidelines section of the, the PUD ordinance. I know there were some concerns and questions there. So I've got a little more information for you there. This is a copy. The colors are easier to see on the TV, but, but either screen or. This is a copy of the updated site plan. It's kind of color-coded to show the, the proposed public park area and trail, which is green, the private road, which is pink or purple, and then the private development, which is yellow. This is an attempt to identify what's new. I think largely the layout of the subdivision looks pretty similar to what it did before. But I'll just draw your attention to the new changes there. I'll start kind of from the bottom and work my way up. The trail parcel has been relocated to the very southern portion of the new development with the intention that it would provide an extra buffer between the, the new homes and the existing homes to the south. We also received clarification in a meeting with Ivory that the trail itself is ten feet wide. I know there's been some concern that the trail is, is, I've heard three and four feet. Ivory confirmed that the trail is ten feet wide, so that gives you a sense of the dimension there.
How, is there, is there space beyond the trail itself, or is that the?
Well, you can kind of see on there, I think it's a little bit conceptual, but it kind of winds a little bit, so you'd, you'd have some, some edge treatment on either side, not a lot.
I think they said there was.
It says a small buffer, but it doesn't say anything else specifically.
Yeah, fenced in, it would be fenced in, but yeah, ten feet with a little bit of, you know, landscaping or edging. Working north, there was a, a question brought up over visitor parking. The, the response includes nine parking stalls. They're actually on the city park property, and as staff as a city, I don't know that we have a huge concern with this. But we have added a, a requirement or a recommended condition that those stalls are always open to the public at all times. They're not, they're not specific to private subdivision visitors, they're just public parking stalls. And if in the, in the design of the park area by the city, the city decides that those stalls shouldn't be where they're located, then the city reserves the right to modify those as needed, because it is on the city property. But as an interim solution, we, we think it works okay. Two snow storage areas have been identified that are just kind of at the end of the Hammerhead roads there. We have proposed a recommended condition that easements be placed in that area with the, an appropriate dimension and capacity determined by the city engineer and public works director to reasonably handle the amount of snow that would be plowed straight down to those dead-end roads, so, you know, the future buyers of the homes don't, don't block that snow storage area, so we would request that they plant an easement there, to keep that clear. On the right side of the screen, this is actually a, you know, a significant one. In the short term, Ivory has had preliminary conversations with UDOT and gotten positive feedback of using Wasatch Boulevard as the construction access for the site. They would essentially build a, you know, a turnout and, and do some temporary grading on Wasatch Boulevard into the property, and then all construction vehicles that are doing site demolition and grading and construction and everything would access from Wasatch Boulevard rather than from the, the interior neighborhood road system. And then the very top, this was in response to the fire department's requirement for lane width. They have increased the, the width of the private lane cross-section by one foot, so it's twenty-six feet total now instead of twenty-five.
And that came out of where? The lots or the open space?
The, not the open space, because they, they can't take away from the open space. That would come out of the lots, just, just a little bit.
So does this mean that, once the subdivision is built out, that the access to Wasatch goes away?
Now they're suggesting.
Not necessarily. It can potentially, and this is probably a, a fire department standard as well, it'll be up to them. There is potential to use it as an emergency vehicle access only perpetually.
I mean, that was one of the things they kind of indicated in their update was that this could be an added benefit to the overall neighborhood as well.
Sure, yeah. I mean, it not only, if you have a secondary egress and the one way out of this area is blocked or, or non-functional for whatever reason, that secondary access certainly would benefit more than just the, the new residents here for emergency vehicle access.
I meant to check, can you guys see, okay, over my head?
Yeah.
Okay. I won't be blocking anybody's view.
So that is, a lot of that is what I just covered on this slide here. I'll keep going and we can come back and, and go through questions. There was some question about the grading, so Ivory Homes prepared these, uh, these kind of cross-section illustrations that, that demonstrate the general grading across kind of two dimensions of the property. I'll start on the bottom with Section B, that's looking south to north, and you get a sense, you know, the left side of this, of the cross-section at the bottom is Dover Hill Drive, that's going to be the highest point of the site. And it, it steps down a, a couple times as you move from west to east across the site with the park being the low-lying area. And even within the park, there is a bit of grade between the private lane and the pavilion that, you know, there's some, some slope there, that's there today, but that would, would remain obviously up to the city on how to grade and finish that park area, but this is just the general.
Total drop is?
Um, well, fifty-one twenty to about fifty, fifty-one hundred or fifty-ninety, so it's a twenty to, to thirty feet through the the full dimension of it.
Correct.
And then cross-section A is taken across the, the north side, essentially the back of this proposed development. As I'm sure you remember, today, there's, from the homes to the north, it drops down. Part of it is the stadium seating and part of it's just a hillside that drops down into the baseball field area, so there is a grade difference there. They're proposing to catch a lot of that grade much quicker than it is today through the use of retaining walls. But you can see that, you know, the illustration at, you know, in this cross-section at least shows the general, you know, relationship of the existing homes to the proposed homes along that back section. And you can see quite a bit of, in this illustration, the first level of that home is, is below, you know, where, where the top of that wall is, so the, the visual impact there even of a two-story home would be mitigated quite a bit by the retaining wall.
Below that is, oh, sorry, go ahead.
You want to go?
Sure, is the city property.
Yes, and.
So what's the drop on the city property?
City property, I can get that between sessions for you. I, I think it, it drops down at about three to one, but it doesn't, it, it's not as drastic as what's shown there. It's, you know, maybe what you see over on Section B, just on the, the backside as well.
Thank you.
So, so in this, I see in Section A, they, they took it from the vantage point of approximately, or it is lot one fifteen or so, but I mean, that, that's where you get the most egregious drop in some of the grading, that the lots one-on-one, one-eleven, one-twelve, it's, it's more like, you know, the parking lot in is fairly flat over, over to the house.
Right.
And so if you build a two-story house there and whatnot, you, you are going to be.
Sure, and we're, again, we're measuring from existing grade. You know, same way we measure building height everywhere in the city, but you can see this plan, the, you know, the retaining wall starts at a, at least on this plat, starts at about one thirteen. And you're right, over by this hammerhead, there's, there's the extra wall that catches the additional grade.
Yeah, I mean, they, on, on, on the east side of the property, they don't have a lot of grading issues, it's just going to be more on the west side.
Right, and, you know, that, that's all subject to the city engineer's review. The part of the sensitive lands analysis is to survey the slopes. If there's slopes, natural slopes that are thirty percent or greater, they're going to be more limited. I don't know what the slope of, of that hillside is right now. So they will be able to grade some of their site, some of it may, they may need to preserve that slope a little bit. There's definitely going to be some grading and retaining where the, the stadium structure is right now. Because that, that stadium bleacher seating is built into the wall, it's a concrete bleacher system right now.
So one of the, one of the thoughts I had after actually just walking the property was especially on the north west side of the property, you're, you're going to lose some pretty significant specimen trees. And then there's a series of specimen trees along, alongside the, the gazebo, I think, I think the majority of them are going to stay. Is there, is there any thought for conditions about canopy coverage or anything else?
Up to us.
Yeah. I didn't see anything entered, any discussion.
Certainly in the park, where it's fully under city control and there's no private development, we'll try to preserve any healthy trees we can.
No, but I mean, as, as part of the, the lot areas.
So, so what, the condition we have in there right now that's been in there is that they hire an arborist and go survey all the trees.
Yeah.
And, and the ones that they can preserve, that, that they do, and if they feel they cannot preserve them or it's not warranted, then they provide that rationale. We did the same thing on the, the Walsh property development, and, and they had an arborist go out, and we hired a third-party arborist as well to verify their work, and that seemed to work pretty well, so it'd be a similar process to that.
Was there a follow-on condition about for, for any, for any non-salvageable trees, which?
That's in our code.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, they had to provide rationale, I, I don't know exactly what you're asking, but if the tree wasn't, if it was large but not healthy, or, you know, they, they, they went and surveyed and analyzed every single tree on the site and provided, hey, this one can be saved. This one's right where our building goes, this one is, is dying or rotting out and it's not safe. They, we would require the same here, as recommended right now.
Mike, let me ask you a question.
Yeah.
Can you go back to the picture? First of all, I'm really, really pleased with their, their reactions to my concerns about the grade, but just in terms of the retention and I still see that we're going to end up with a little bit of a swamp and potentially a mosquito issue, just based on our experience with parks within Cotton Heights, the ones that have retention basins, and I'm wondering what would the ask look like if we asked them to put in some type of a stormwater system as a condition to make sure that the water, at least on the roads and above, in all directions were captured and tied into the stormwater system? What would that, what would that look like in terms of our requirements?
So the city engineer has, you know, preliminary looked at this. The, you know, the square here that you see is not, you know, by, by any means fully approved yet. They have to go through and do all their stormwater calculations. Parks are, you know, it, it's fairly common for parks to be used for some retention or detention. I don't, I don't know the right phrase, I'm not an engineer. What we want to avoid is private retention at the, at the expense of functionality of the park. So we, what we wouldn't want to see is a six-foot drop into a hole to accommodate all the stormwater. So some options there that we've used, even right up the street in Danish Pines, is you have some, some private retention right on the properties, and they retain as much runoff as they can and then discharge into a, a stormwater system or slowly release into a, you know, an overflow basin. So there are options to do that.
If their curb and gutter on the park side was substantial enough that it can capture the stormwater and route it, that, that seems, that seems like that, I mean, if it's going to be so negligible, I don't, it seems to me like that would be a reasonable condition, that their curb and gutter isn't going to just pour into the, into the grass.
So, yeah, I think without being confident in my engineering and stormwater comprehension, I think a reasonable condition there would be to, to to retain or, or handle as much stormwater runoff as possible, as is practicable from an engineering standpoint within the private development or, or surrounding stormwater system. And then make that subject to approval by the, the DRC or the city engineer.
The only existing stormwater is on the existing roads, correct?
Yeah, I think there's one in Wasatch as well, and I don't know, the applicant might be able to address that better than I can in the business meeting.
I can tell you that the, the parking lot, the, the lower parking lot in the Dover Hill Chapel right now has, has a strong curb and gutter that, and to capture there. But there's no, there are no drains built into the, into the ballfield, because it just, the, the natural grade is
Well, that is.
not the flat, that it's, that it's, it's doing its job just for what it is, so replicating that for the park would be awesome, but I, I just get nervous because of the, from the properties, as long as it's going to be captured in those roads and they, they're handling it around the outside, but I just don't want it to pour from these lots into this park.
Sure.
And, yeah, and.
Yeah.
Mike's exactly right.
Yeah.
Those are the kind of conditions we need to be considering, yeah.
But, and, and there are options. We've seen it implemented in other developments that they retain onsite or, or discharge as much as, as is practicable.
That's exactly what our ordinance is saying.
Yep.
Thank you.
I will now jump to this. This was requested by the commission. This is a diagram showing there's a question of how lot coverage is affected by the, the modification in lot frontage or lot width and setbacks. And this is a little small, I apologize, maybe I can zoom in. It is affected, not, not drastically, sorry. Not drastically above the city ordinance requirement right now. R one-eight lot coverage maximum, outside of a PUD is fifty percent. They are, they are essentially, what they did was they maximized the building footprints on their plat here and calculated that coverage, and that's the numbers that are shown.
And that's with their requested setbacks of ten feet.
Five feet, yeah, five-foot side yards, twenty-five feet in the front and twenty in the rear, is what's shown here, except for the one lot that has a, a slightly changed setback now, so.
Does this, this include the twenty-six-foot road width, or?
Yes, this is the. Yes, this is the, the updated submittal. So part of their request would be, uh, a variation to the minimum lot coverage up to the maximum shown on this diagram. That being said, uh, chances are most homes aren't going to fully maximize those square rectangle pad areas. Um, so, so that would be the absolute maximum and we would anticipate a lot of the homes would be actually slightly under that. Um, you can see some of them are already, you know, compliant, but they're all in that fifty, fifty to fifty-four percent range.
Yeah, I mean, they'd be building out five, six thousand square foot homes depending on the number.
It gives a buildable square footage on each of those.
Right. So, so this would dictate where they can build on the site. Anywhere within those, essentially those dotted.
Should we approve the setbacks?
Correct, correct. Um, the, the one other change was lot one-on-one there. It shares a side yard. Uh, the, the lot to the north on the corner that's existing is also a side yard. The home faces to the west. So where those two side yards are together, um, they have increased their side setback to seven feet. Again, um, I, I don't know about a home would be built fully right up to that along that entire frontage where it's a kind of a diagonal line, but rather than the five-foot requested setback, there'd be seven. The minimum in city code for R-one-eight is eight feet, so that's pretty close to what the, uh, you know, a, a non-PUD lot, uh, would be required, uh, in terms of a side setback.
And the, the, the existing home there has a twenty-foot setback? Is there a corner lot? Is that correct?
Um, well, that's the side yard of your existing home. So I think it is closer. I think the home, without verifying, I think the home is.
It's written in here. They, they looked at it. Okay. I think it was fifteen.
Okay.
Which our current code says twenty on a corner lot.
Twenty would be.
In the R-one-eight, which is the underlying zoning we're looking at.
Yeah. Um, and then one-eleven, they are not requesting a change, but the lot directly to the north of that is a rear yard. So there is a, a little more, uh, you know, natural setback built in there. So again, the two, um, two efforts to increase buffer from the existing area. One is with the trail parcel and one is with the, you know, the two feet of additional requested setback, um, lot one-on-one there.
Okay.
Um, there were questions about the housing mix in terms of one-story and two-story homes and also a question about ADUs. Um, they did not provide specific detail or clarification on exactly where one and two-story homes will be. The rationale given is that they will implement the, the design catalogs that were shared with the commission, um, which are semi-custom homes and the, the buyers will choose. Um, however, that catalog did give you an example of, of kind of the, the level and type of homes that, that would be acceptable. Um, what is clarified is that all homes have a minimum two-car garage with a full-size two-car driveway, which should help with some of the visitor parking concerns as well, where you, you know, you, we're not doing any, you know, no tandem parking, no one, one-car garages. We've got full driveways and, and at minimum of two-car garages with the option of three cars if, if it's possible on the lots.
When we say full, um, two-car, um, driveways, what do we, what do we mean by?
Uh, they have not requested a modification to the front setback. That front setback's twenty-five feet. Some of the other PUDs, uh, your Givernais and your, uh, Newberry Groves.
Yeah.
They have reduced front setbacks in their driveways, you know, a, a pickup truck barely fits. There is no request. This would be a standard residential setback here.
Are there any other issues related to the parking or the size of the lots based on our experiences with Givernay and some of these others that request exceptions that you guys as a staff have flagged as, we've kind of, we've gotten questions about this before.
Where we.
Anything at all?
Where we see the concerns, um, with, with overflow parking is when it interfaces with the public street system directly. Givernay is all private.
Yeah.
There may be parking issues there, but it's all, it, it doesn't make it to us a lot. It's, it's self-regulated by the HOA as we think would be the case here. Um, Canyon Center is the, the most glaring example of, of parking concerns that we've heard. Um, that's a kind of a, a very different product where you have a narrow driveway system with no, no driveways really. Uh, just access and two-car garages and, and no overflow parking anywhere. Um, so in a product like this, you know, your, your, uh, Royal Oaks Estates on Creek Road and Newberry Groves, we don't see the, the parking issues that we see in some of the other, uh, you know, mixed-use projects or like your canyon centers or, or other places like that. So with the, no decrease in, in front setback and two-car garages and a, a road system, it, it'll be up to the fire department on whether they would allow parking along that interior lane. They may. I don't know what their standard is. Um, and, and plus the limited, but still provision of, of visitor parking. We can't anticipate a, a, a really big impact in what visitor parking will do in this area.
Well, the one thing we can't anticipate, which you have next is the ADUs.
Sure.
Yeah.
So, yeah, uh, again, I want to clarify, no requests for modifications in how the city measures building height, um, or existing grade or anything like that.
Unless there's a slope discussion on that northwest side, that would create a height.
Sure. If, if they grade unnecessarily, that it's not required for any legitimate, um, drainage or, or city purposes, they can grade, but that counts against their maximum building height. So that, and that's how we do it for any other home.
Our code says it brings them down to thirty feet.
Just so. And it, yeah, yeah, there's a thirty-foot restriction on, uh, areas with natural slopes of thirty percent or greater.
Quick question on the first bullet point.
Uh-huh.
I mean, there, there's only a handful of lots that are, that are probably problematic just in terms of whether or not what the height is just based upon some of the grading issues and location. Do we have the legal sufficiency to either limit specific lots to be one-story?
What? I, I think you need to clarify what the concern is and if there's an ordinance that.
Right.
Yeah.
If, if view is not protected anywhere in the ordinance.
I know this is a problem.
You know, then a condition to mitigate view is probably not appropriate.
Yeah, I, 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 that's kind of what I was debating is, I mean, you know, I, I get the concern, especially with those homes, but the, the reality is the zone, the zoning itself allows for two-story.
Just like, you know, in, in the adjacent residential area, there's a lot of one-story homes. They could all go add on another story.
But there's also homes in the area that are, that are two-story and fairly.
So where they're not requesting height modifications, we, we would suggest they just follow city code to, you know, regardless of what the city code says, if, if there's a slope there or, uh, you know, grading that raises up the site.
That's the one, one thing we need to understand.
Yeah.
Um, they have stated there are no upfront plans for ADUs, but, um, city code and state code allows ADUs as permitted uses anywhere in single-family homes. City code has, uh, its own parking requirements, uh, really as restrictive as we're allowed to as a city. Um, so, so it would be up to future property owners whether they'd like to utilize these properties as ADUs or not. Again, just like any other single-family home.
Does it, I mean, what, what are the parking constraint and issues built into the ADU ordinance almost explicitly prohibit?
Not necessarily.
Now, it, it's pretty, um, the, the bar's not too high, uh, to clear to get an ADU.
You have to have separate parking built in for the.
You have to have one extra parking stall and we have required that it cannot be a tandem stall. So it cannot be, if you only had a two-car garage and a two-car driveway, you'd need a pad somewhere else. It can't be one of those two parkings.
Yeah, I mean, that's a question though, because of, because of the orientation of some of the lots.
So, so, yeah, yeah. The lots are limited and they can't expand and add a, a parking pad, then they'd be limited in that regard.
I, I would like to make sure that we're not going to use any of that. Um, I, I would prefer that the, the park parking not be considered overflow for that reason too.
Well, I think, and I think that's something we need to clarify with this application because they've got the, the parking on the park there. That, that was their response.
Yeah.
It's my understanding that's their response to our.
Visitor parking.
Or visitor parking. Um, so it's out at the park or those three stalls that are along the private road.
And I think what we would recommend there is when the city's park is designed and improvements are underway, then that limitation take effect in the interim. If, you know, if, if there's, the houses are are, are occupied before the park is fully finished, that, that can be kind of flexible parking space and then the city will come in and redesign the park, obviously.
Right. But, yeah, I think the issue for us in the conditional use is that, um, we, if we put the burden on the city for monitoring that and that becomes problematic.
Sure. You, you know, as a, we don't have a huge concern based on what we talked about, you know, that visitor parking and overflow parking is going to cause a, 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 you know, really negative issue here. Maybe the commission does have that concern, but, um, you know, if, if those parking stalls aren't provided, I, you know, I think we would still feel comfortable, given that.
It's the twenty-six foot width on the private road that really, um, becomes an issue. You know, if I have a dinner party and I live on that twenty-six foot, you know, right now I live on a sixty-foot I can have dinner party and my neighbors can still get home. In there, it could be a problem.
And I'm completely supportive of the overflow for like a gathering or something like that, but just like we treat uh, Banbury Park and others where it's gated overnight. At a certain point overnight, yes, you know, with a, you're not going to have twenty people at your house overnight. And I think that also solves the not counting that for ADU and some potential security. If we have the option, not that we're going to, but that we could as a city, because it's our property that we could gate that at a certain point if we felt like it was getting out of hand.
Yeah.
I'd like us to be able to reserve that and how we set it up.
I think the city has, it, it'll be a city park. We have that full authority. And if, if recommended, we could include language, uh, in the development agreement. Um, that will go to council subsequent to, you know, if, if this gets approved. That we could have language in there that protects against that concern.
All right. Have we hit most of this?
Um, almost. Sorry.
Few other items.
Yeah, and I, I do want to, so, so let's, we're going to just address it as, as, as much time as we have. So if we don't have time tonight, we'll spend more time next meeting. So.
We have other, other.
But we do have a few other actions. So construction access I dealt with already. Um, that has been added as a recommended condition of approval. Trash removal will be contracted by the HOA and, and, uh, serviced by a private trash collection company. We have updated a, a recommended condition of approval that any home that fronts directly on the private street cannot haul their trash receptacles out to the public road. New homes in the subdivision that front on public streets can have their trash picked up like everybody else, but if they're on the private road, they need to be part of that private trash collection. Um, and then the, the snow removal, um, they've identified areas and stated the HOA will contract to remove it. We have recommended a condition to preserve those snow storage areas by easement with the, the right size and capacity determined by the, the city engineer. Um, I, I have these. I can do this in the business meeting if you'd like, but I, I've gone through the ordinance, um, to design guidelines section of the ordinance and provided, um, staff kind of analysis of each of those. Would you like me to take the time to do this now or, or in the business?
Let's do it.
In the business meeting. So I'll come back to that, but we do have some, some findings for why staff feels that what's proposed does comply, um, both what's presented and, and what's conditioned, uh, will comply with.
Thank you. And Mike, I'd like to clarify something. When I was reading through this, you, you, you stated that it's finding a fact, um, which in terms of the planning commission is something that happens after a planning commission decision. And the planning commission puts that forward in, in concert with, with staff. So let's, um, either strike that language, um, because I think that could become problematic in our record as we move forward.
Yeah, I, I, that's a good question. I would, I would say that those, those findings are recommended findings that justify the recommended conditions, but yeah, they are not.
Findings of fact by the staff on their own analysis, but, but finding of fact means something different in the planning commission means. So I'd recommend that we strike that language.
Okay.
I like the way you just said it, recommended.
We've recommended conditions, so we've recommended findings to support them. But, yeah, I leveled that wrong.
I think that takes away any confusion that could, could exist in our record.
These, um, along with the architecture standards section, these are out of the catalog that, that they submitted, uh, you know, example images. This is not all of them. There's a lot of choices in there of the types of materials and architecture and design that could be implemented. Both one and two-story homes are in that catalog. Uh, they have also in their, uh, draft development agreement stated that they would not allow, um, aluminum siding and stucco as predominant siding material. Those materials would only be allowed in soffit and, and fish areas that are kind of the roof ridge lines. Um, so the predominant materials would be stone and hardy board and, um, you know, a, a heavier, sturdier material is, is building material. Uh, I've, I've covered conditional use, uh, authority, uh, from the state legislation before. There is a discrepancy between the city code and the state code on this where the city code says, um, these can be denied, um, but where a PUD is a conditional use, we do need to defer to that, uh, conditional.
And that's true in all of our, all of our ordinance. So I don't see any reason to call it out here. As we said in our last meeting when this first came up. We as a body have been charged with looking at the code for Cottonwood Height City. So that's what the planning commission will move forward with, understanding that that is always underlying all of our codes and ordinances.
It's just, just courtesy of that. Um, so the recommended conditions, um, the green ones here are new. Everything else is the same. Um, but we are recommending, you know, the thorough sensitive lands process needs to take place. Uh, uh, traffic impact memo needs to be completed to analyze the traffic impact, the tree preservation plan uncovered. Um, we'll serve letters from utility companies. You know, they have to go through that standard process. Um, the architecture review commission needs to go through their process on this. Um, the conditions related to, um, trash and snow removal and where, uh, where collection can take place and where it can't have been added. We've added a, uh, condition, uh, to utilize Wasatch Boulevard as construction access pursuant to UDOT's permitting process. We've also included in there, if UDOT has an issue or, or there's something that can't access there, um, they need to provide notification in writing to, to the city and then we will in turn provide notification to the neighborhood prior to any construction access um, for whatever specific reason is, is needed outside of Wasatch Boulevard.
Will that not be posted on the construction site?
It will. So what we're saying is normal construction activity needs to access on Wasatch Boulevard. If there's some special circumstance where they can't, one truck or whatever, they need to tell us and we need to provide notice that the day and time and, and how long, uh, that will take.
Thank you.
Um, uh, documentation about the maintenance upkeep and enforcement of parking and traffic, that's actually not a new condition. That's, that's existing. Um, we've just asked them to provide clear detail of how the, the pedestrian connection ties into the existing sidewalk system to make sure there's a continuous connection from sidewalk to, to park. And then the easement for the snow area. All the other, um, conditions are the same as before. And eleven is important to, to hit on here that any modifications um, that result in any sort of change to the subdivision layout you've seen here before you take a vote, uh, will need to come back to the planning commission and go through this process again. So if there are sense of land hazards identified on the site that modify what can be built and where, that will come back through the planning commission for a new preliminary plat and an, and amended conditional use approval.
Thank you, Mike. I think it's time to move on.
Yes, thanks.
Okay, thank you. I think the next item is mine, the lot consolidation. I will give a very quick overview. Uh, it's pretty straightforward, so won't take up too much time. There we go. So, uh, so combining two lots at the corner of Siesta Drive and Caballero Drive, um, this is in the, uh, rural residential zone that requires a minimum lot size of one acre. We're taking two lots. One is an acre and one is just slightly, it's like point nine acres combining to create one large lot, one point nine acres. Uh, the house will be reviewed, uh, require a building permit. So we haven't looked at all of this. It'll have to meet code and go through the normal process, but um, because it's an existing subdivision, they're changing the number of lots in the subdivision. If something that counts as an amendment has to be reviewed by the planning commission. But it does meet the minimum lot width, size and better requirements of the zoning ordinance. So we're recommending approval. Um, and, uh, yeah, but that's all the time I'll take right now. We can go in more depth in our next meeting. But that's a quick overview of that item.
And do we have the applicant here?
Yeah, they're here. So I can address some questions.
One, one question I had for you on this is that, um, this is the first public hearing for this, correct?
Yes.
And it's thirty days from public hearing for a decision. So I can clarify whether we have an action item on this.
Yeah, within thirty days. We've scheduled it for hearing and possible action if you feel comfortable. Um, but yeah, I think that's, yeah, within thirty days. Have to consider it.
This is a beautiful neighborhood. This will add to that. That, that looks like a fantastic first shot of what they're doing on it.
Thank you.
Neighbors, neighbors have been noticed though.
Yeah. A few different types of noticing each application requires new different types.
Right.
Mail posted, that we make sure.
Yeah, I think we do four-hundred-foot notice in the mail for subdivision amendments. It's also posted on the website.
Which is a must in this neighborhood there. They're big law.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's very true. Are you guys ready for me to share?
We are. Please go ahead.
Okay, so I'm going to make sure it pops up here. Going to run us through quickly, um, a zoning tax amendment we're looking at tonight for some water efficiency landscaping standards. And before I dive in, I want to note that we do have, um, our expert with us tonight, uh, Rick Moy from the Central Utah Water Conservancy. So Rick is here during our business session, uh, sorry, during our work session and then, um.
Why don't you come up and join us while we talk through this?
Do you want to come sit up here, Rick?
We're in a pandemic, so you do what you feel comfortable with, but.
Go ahead, right here.
Um, you can still sit here. I'll sit over there.
So we've got Rick here and he's definitely the expert. So I just wanted to let you guys know if you have technical questions, Rick is a great resource.
Thank you.
Um, but I'll kind of run us through some of the, the background and everything. And Rick, feel free to jump in.
Sure.
You have stuff to add. Um, so I wanted to start off with just, um, maybe a little bit of a primer on why we're looking at water efficiency. And I think it's largely a two-pronged thing. On the one hand, water's limited in Utah. Most estimates put it as in the top five driest states um, in the nation with some even as the second driest. And then we also have a growing population, whether through expanding families or relocation, we're looking at a projection of doubling our population in the next forty years or so. Um, and when you look at those two things together. Um, and when you look at those two things together, it creates kind of a need to look at water. Um, I'm not going to read this in this session, but the D N R does a great job of kind of summing up the issue of, you know, we live in a dry area and we have a lot of people who, who love Utah, rightfully so, and want to be here and that creates a bit of a, a pinch on water. Um, there's a lot of different ways to conserve water, whether it's inside your house, um, even through the food you eat. But tonight we're going to be looking at landscaping and, and kind of the rationale behind that is that Utah State University estimates that we as Utah, Utahns use about two thirds of our drinking or culinary water for landscaping. Um, and this percentage largely comes from over irrigating, which kind of illustrates this opportunity we have to maybe look at the way we're irrigating and landscaping our yards. Um, and maybe be a little bit more efficient to bring that number down. It's, it's a great way to address water conservation. Um, because when we scale down on some of the water we're using on our yards, it frees it up to be used for other really critical functions like health, hygiene, food, et cetera. Sorry, this mouse is really hard to do. Project a screen. Um, I also wanted to just make note of some state level planning that kind of further illustrates why we're looking at this. Um, we're in the, just very onset of the twenty twenty two Utah legislative session and we've already seen a lot of water bills um, that get at water conservation from a legislative level. Um, and they look at things like plumbing fixtures, water accounting, you know, tracking where our water's going. Um, but also landscaping and two of the bills that are proposed even, um, propose to basically prevent cities from requiring lawn, so it would take away kind of lawn minimums. Um, so this is something that's very much being looked at, at a state level. And then a little bit more specifically, there are a handful of state agencies, so the governor and then governor's office of planning and budget, um, division of natural resources, department of environmental, environmental quality and department of agriculture and food are collaborating on an action plan for water use. Um, and one of the goals that the governor has identified for conservation, for water conservation, um, is to expand incentive programs basically that encourage residents to voluntarily switch out the lawn in their park strips and their yards. Um, the two existing programs that kind of fill this need are the flip your strip program, which provides a rebate for park strip conversions. And then the local skates rewards, which provides kind of the same idea, but for yard conversions. And historically, these were only, um, available for households that were served by Jordan Valley Water Conservancy District, so that's um, households in places like Harriman or I think like Riverton.
Uh, Riverton, West Jordan, most on the west side.
Yes, and so Cottonwood Heights, I think we have two commercial properties that are served by Jordan Valley, but the bulk of our city is underneath Central Utah Water Conservancy District. And so we were hearing from a lot of our residents that they were so interested in these programs, but not eligible. Um, and then in August of twenty twenty one, kind of to facilitate the governor's call for this expanded incentive eligibility, Central Utah opened up the incentives uh, to households in Salt Lake County, so we became eligible in Cottonwood Heights. Yay. Um, for communities who want to continue to be eligible for these incentive programs, they need to adopt water conservation landscaping standards by July twenty twenty one, or sorry, twenty twenty two. So that's why we're looking at this tonight. That's, um, kind of the trigger, the water provider requirement that was the catalyst for this, although it's a really important thing in its own right.
And that's for those two programs that you brought up.
Correct.
Flip the strip and, and.
Yep.
Local skates, okay.
Um, so I wanted to just, if it's appropriate time wise, maybe I'll take just two minutes and kind of walk you through the standards that would be, that we're proposing basically. These were the standards that came from Central Utah as far as what they require communities to adopt. Um, so it applies to new construction. Our language recommends that people use it for like yard redos, but it just would be required in new construction. So for irrigation and utilization of drip irrigation, except for in lawn areas. Um, and using efficiently designed irrigation, which is quantified through some different metrics there. Um, using mulch and landscape beds and covering approximately half of the beds themselves with landscaping um, in an attempt to not just get dirt yards, you want to have some landscaping in those beds. Um, no lawn allowed in park strips or narrow patches or on steep slopes. I think it's a four to one that it, um, triggers. And then a single family residential lawn maximum of thirty five percent of the landscape and multifamily and commercial lawn maximum of twenty percent. I do want to note there's an exception if it was like an active recreation or anything like a park or a soccer facility, that wouldn't apply there. Want to still have those areas available for recreation. Um, and then specific to residential landscapes, uh, the standards also require use of local skates principles, which obviously has the same name as that incentive program. Local skates, um, is kind of like a, a landscape design ethic or, um, guideline set. Um, and it hinges on ideas of using a central open shape that's a geometric shape in the design of your landscape. Um, using hard skate for gathering areas, surfacing activity zones, so like underneath playgrounds with things other than lawn. Um, surfacing paths with things other than lawn and then exceptions can be made on a case by case basis, basis if we're looking at something like soil water management.
What is the logic behind the central open shape? Rick, do you want to? That's the one thing that just kind of.
Sure. So, um, historically, as homes are developed, the default landscape is just lawn. Like we'll put in lawn from, you know, curb to house.
Yeah.
And then what we'll do is af, as an afterthought, we'll carve out an area for a planting bed. And so you'll have like those kidney bean islands in the front yard. And what that does is it, it causes, creates challenges with irrigation efficiency. So you have things obstructing or cut out in the middle of, of what would normally be an efficient
Got it.
area for irrigation. And so rather than do that, we're saying if you design your lawn to maximize functionality, uh, we don't want to get rid of lawn, but we don't want it to be obstructed and we want to, uh, have our irrigation be as efficient as possible. And so the more, um, you know, central that shape is as a design element, uh, that it's designed that way to begin with, the better the landscape will be in the long run.
Thank you.
And I've got a picture of it here that kind of illustrates it. The colors are always so weird on this screen. Um, but it just shows on the left maybe standard practice with a very, um, predominant lawn. And then it shows what it would look like, maybe taking into account these new standards where you do have lawn, but it's just a little more deliberate with where it's placed.
Yeah.
Um, and in this example, it estimates a lot of water savings, um, just in switching that over. So I just wanted to share that to help you visualize.
That's a great visual. That would be nice to see going out into a journal, just, I mean, that, that's.
I thought it was really helpful.
Going from grass to just rocks.
That's actually a great idea.
That's pretty impressive.
Gets introduced as a.
Yeah, they, Central Utah and, um, Utah Water Savers has taken the time to develop so many helpful resources. So it, I think it helps communicate that we're not asking people to just put down lava rock. We want it to still feel.
My neighbor's lava rock is in my bed.
We want it to still feel really functional and, and lush and welcoming. And there's, there's ways to do that and just save a lot of water. Um, these don't really apply to this meeting, but we are recommending that the commission forward a recommendation of approval to the council. This is a legislative change, so it would be approved at the council level if they decide to. Um, are there any questions from you guys before we move on?
Well, you've given us a lot to, to look through.
Yes, so I, I just feel bad about the really heavy packet. What is?
It's fine. It's just a matter of all the other items. Knowing that this one would be introduced, we thought, okay, I thought, at least personally, I thought, well, okay, I can read through that.
Yeah, the bulk of it is just showing where we have to make red lines in our code to make it all work, so.
That's a lot.
Sorry for the reading material.
What I want to know is when do we get talking about secondary water?
That's a great question and maybe something you can also talk to us about even on a.
Much different issue, I understand, but you know, that, that's a big one.
I think that's also being contemplated in the legislative session. I saw somebody mentioned on secondary meters, so.
There is, and I'm certainly able to answer a lot of questions related to secondary water as that is, uh, an action item of the governor as well as of the district itself and uh, in providing funding opportunities for that and also, uh, availability of resources uh, beyond just funding the meters themselves.
I will also mention that, um, we are going to be hosting a water conservation landscaping class on March eighth. Um, so we'll start to advertise that in the newsletter, uh, but Central Utah will be teaching us how to implement water efficiency landscaping. So, great. We'll continue to have resources available. Um, I didn't leave much time for slides. I'm so sorry.
That's all right. Like Mike said, you know, we can push this to the next meeting. Happy to give a quick overview if you'd like in our remaining time.
About four minutes.
You know, we can.
And how much brain capacity do we all have left?
Yeah, I think let's, let's just continue. We want to have our engineer come to a work session as well, maybe once we have some of these big items behind us. Um, so you've got the information, you've got the materials. We can send our slides to you after the meeting as well. That kind of simplifies what we're proposing.
Very much like to just be like a starting point to start the discussion.
We'll, we'll come back and, and talk more in February.
It's not really like any final.
I do, one public comment for the subdivision, um, was concerned that the new standards in the sensitive lands update will apply to this, the subdivision and, and and benefited in some way that, that didn't seem fair, but that's not the case. That, that subdivision invested under the current ordinance.
That was shared in the comments you shared.
Yeah, it was in the public comments, yep.
Thank you. Uh, we need a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Is that good?
That's good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We'll reconvene in about a few minutes.
We're hanging in there, everybody.